Welcome back everyone to the Disaster Tough Podcast where we share insights into the big plays and right calls of leadership. We dive deep into the stories, lessons learned, and ideas that will help you in the field. Let's go.
Welcome back to the Disaster Tough Podcast. I'm your host, John Scardina. I have a very special opportunity today. I have to say my phrase. I'm very excited for this episode. You all get to pick on me when I go out to conferences because I say that every episode, but it's true. It's genuine. I'm pretty excited. This one, kind of remembering it for it for, I don't know, a few months now. I had an awesome, awesome opportunity to meet Brendan and actually one of his coworkers down there in New Zealand, Al. So a big shout out to Al as well. And we had great conversations about some of the innovative work that they're doing down there as well as Brendan's specific work here in the US, working with FEMA and other partners to pull together what to do in an earthquake, his work and his understanding of earthquakes in New Zealand. You fast forward several years after the Christchurch earthquake and it was starting to apply internationally as well, not only in the US, but in like places like DePaul where they had an earthquake in 2015. And that was really exciting to look at some of his work. And so with the scheduling of the podcast and everything's going, we might be talking a little bit about Hurricane Milton. Just heads up, we're recording this right when Hurricane Milton is passing through Florida. So you're going to hear, hear this in a few weeks. So if there's been updates since then, you know, heads up on that, but we like to do pre-recording so that we go out and deploy and do the other stuff. So with that, I'm going to have Brendan come to the show. Hey, how you doing?
Hi, John. Very good. Thanks. And thanks for having me on.
You know, you're an emergency manager in Christchurch. You are, you have a global footprint with some of the work that you've done, which is pretty cool and pretty exciting. You know, thinking about New Zealand, when we talked earlier, we talked about the Christchurch earthquake, I think it was in 2000, either 2010 or 2011. But when that came through, northern part of the island, but it'd be much worse in terms of the scale of things if it happened in the southern part. Outside of the Lord of the Rings, for the most of us in America, can you, can you walk through a little more of the geography of New Zealand and the earthquake danger that you're constantly facing?
Sure. Yep. So New Zealand sits on the Pacific Rim of Fire. We have the Pacific Plate to our east and the Australian Plate to our west. And so a large part of New Zealand is actually formed by those two tectonic plates rubbing up against each other for the last couple of million years. So New Zealand fundamentally exists because of the tectonic plate structure and the Pacific Rim of Fire. We have a lot of volcanoes in the North Island of New Zealand and a large mountain range that runs through the spine of the South Island. It also happens to be the location for some of our Alpine Fault, our large scale earthquakes there too. So New Zealand's a long skinny country in the subtropics, in the far north, it's nice and warm, in the far south, it's pretty cold. And besides the Lord of the Rings, we're probably pretty well known for rugby as well.
Yeah, you got a good rugby team. I played sevens and fifteens, so I've known about New Zealand for a while. You know, the, the Lord of the Rings reference, when you guys have an alert and warning go up, do you, do you do fires on top of all the mountain tops to get it, to get it down? Did you take that from them? How do you guys, how, do you take a lot of your best practices from the US or do you take it from other countries? I know, I think I just saw a post, a really cool post that you're working with Japan on some of their earthquake readiness. Where have you drawn your best practices from? And as kind of a starting point of both the conversation and for a learner in earthquake readiness, where, where do you go and how have you become an expert in that?
Yeah, in an experienced a loaded term, isn't it, John? I prefer to consider myself experienced. Expertise is something we're aiming towards. To your question around best practice, we look everywhere. The good thing about being stuck on the other side of the planet is we don't have any, we've only got maritime borders. We don't have any land borders. So we don't feel obliged to, to talk to our neighbors specifically about these events, although we do do that. So we look to the, yes, absolutely to the US, but also to Europe and the UK. Also Canada, we know has a similar setup to us. And you know, many of the risks are the same there too, but also South America, Central America, large parts of Asia. And we're constantly trying to help out our Pacific neighbors too. So Australia to the west, but also out of the Pacific, Fiji, Tonga Samoa, et cetera. We look to them and they also look to us. So we'll, we'll go anywhere with this best practice and we're happy to, to take good ideas and embed them here if they work for us.
The L3 Harris Extreme 400P radio solves problems and is specifically designed for emergency services. How do we know? We field tested it with medical, urban search and rescue and collapse and confined structures. This radio is amazingly tough. Check out the L3 Harris Extreme 400P radio at l3harris.com right now. How do you spell Doberman Emergency Management? E O P, O E P, H V A, H M P, THYRA, T T X, Drome, P D A. Whenever you need an expert, Doberman Emergency Management field experts are there for support. Contact an expert at dobermanemg.com today. Yeah. In terms of good ideas, I remember the Kobe disaster with that earthquake and the policy changes that happened in Japan after that. For example, if somebody doesn't know who's listening in, and I'm sure you do, you know, all the firehouses in Japan, when there's an earthquake warning, they automatically open up all the doors. There's some of the changes that happened after the Kobe disaster. In terms of what New Zealand's doing, both on the innovative front and looking at, you know, that global footprint that you, you noted. I mean, I, I actually didn't realize that Canada was so close in terms of the, the style of the approach. When you're looking at earthquake readiness, what are some of the, I don't know, top five, 10 things that you're like, okay, we pulled this from that, this location, we pulled that from there. How have you aggregated your best practices down there?
Yeah, good question. And the, the method of doing that is a bit disparate. So in New Zealand, we have a three-part system, or a four-part system more correctly. So at the top of it would be the community and we're very clear that the community response is the most important part. And in support of that, we have local government, which is a level that I work at. And then we have a regional arrangements, what we call group, where those local governments are bundled together and coordinated and then supported or anchored by the national framework. And that is similar in many ways to other parts of the world. And we look to replicate best practice where we can there. Aggregating the lessons learned is done at three different levels. So at a, we have a NEMA, which is similar to the US FEMA, not anywhere near the same scale, but it has a similar policy and all of country outlook. We don't have quite the same grant funding setup as the US, but other parts of government do that. So our, our NEMA or FEMA and Australia NEMA and the, you know, the equivalent establishments in Canada and others, they are aggregating their national level data and they'll bring it in. We're at the moment, our NEMA are doing catastrophic planning. They're updating all the plans for that and they're reaching out globally to do that. At a regional level, they're sort of stuck in the middle between the national and local level. They have a role to play there in coordination and they do, they find their counterparts around the world. And at a local level, we are constantly in touch with compatriots and, you know, various constituencies. So just recently been on the phone to a group of people on the east coast of Australia. They have a similar earthquake profile. They have a similar tsunami profile. Their demographics and geography are largely similar as well. So we can quickly exchange information, hot tips, ideas, et cetera. So we happily give away our information that we've collected on earthquakes. There's no proprietary controls over it whatsoever. If people ask for it, they can have it. And we're happy to do that. The exchange we have though is if we're giving away information about earthquakes, we're quite keen to get back information on tsunamis. That's our next biggest risk and we want to build some maturity and experience there. So we're talking to the east coast of Australia a lot. I've just made a connection in, another connection in Canada. We're talking to Washington state and Seattle. A bit too around how they manage the Cascadia hazard they have there too. So at all different levels, all that aggregation comes together. And you know, we compartmentalize it by hazard, lots of documentation, lots of research, and then some best practice in terms of setting up our plans and operations as well.
Yeah, it's really fascinating hearing you talk about it from the kind of that strategic level, that 50,000 foot level, all the way through looking at some of these documents that, you know, I saw that you were the author on. I actually looked them up specifically right before this, so I make sure I got them right. So if somebody wants to look it up too, it's really fascinating work. FEMA P 2055 to coordinating earthquake recommendations, right, for damaged buildings. And then you had another article, Beyond the Rubble, Christchurch Earthquake Recovery, which funny enough, you're talking about the, the funding issue from NEMA, but you were talking specifically in there, that process between the community and some of the tensions that kind of arose from, you know, the recovery efforts in there in the community. If I can go real tactical, real fast, can we start with the Christchurch earthquake disaster? Actually, I'm going to preface it real quick. So you don't know this. I don't think I shared this with you last time, but I had lived in Japan previously in 2006 to 2008. And then I knew people who moved to Christchurch and were impacted by the earthquake. And by the time I did my thesis in my undergrad, I went to school a few years later than most people. And I looked at Christchurch, Japan, American Samoa disaster, an earthquake, tsunami in, in Australia and the 2004 tsunami in the Indian Ocean. So if you combine those things, that's my, my perspective is kind of that, that outlook. But for the, for the audience perspective, especially those who are younger in their career, can you frame out what happened in the Christchurch earthquake?
Sure. Yeah. And this podcast will never be long enough to do all that, but
10 part series. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. If we jump in the chopper and take a kind of a big picture view, prior to 2010 in New Zealand, there was little, little understanding of the earthquake risk in Christchurch, New Zealand. There was not, it was not none, but it was limited. And in 2010, September that year, there was a decent sized earthquake in a rural area nearby Christchurch and it shook the city up. Was it, was it 7.1, I think? And that gave the city a real shake. And at the time, the city came through it quite well. There was, there was damage and there was injuries, but largely we came through it pretty well. So there was a sort of a feeling that our preparations were okay. The following February, there was another significant sized earthquake, but this time much closer to the city. And the damage it caused through the P waves and the S waves that hit the city, there were a number of buildings collapsed. There was 185 people, unfortunately tragically lost their lives. And there was extensive liquefaction, lateral spread, rock roll, cliff collapse, inundation, earthquake damage across the city. And at that point there, the response really kicked in. So there was a 11 kilometer fence in US terms, six or seven miles fence put around a, put around our city. And we were managing access into that, you know, controlling access into that, plus a whole heap of other activity outside that. And that was really the trigger for an earthquake sequence, which had 10,000 aftershocks. And you know, and many of those you don't feel, but several hundred or possibly thousand of those you do feel. And no building gets better after an earthquake. So you've, you've got an earthquake or an aftershock sequence, which is constantly degrading the building stock while you're managing a response and while you're trying to turn that response into recovery. So it was a, a multi-billion dollar effort in $2,011. It involved the entire city and large parts of the country and the effects of it still being felt today.
The, the, if, if I recall this correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the first earthquake, although it was technically larger in scale, the type of shaking was it, of it wasn't, it was more vertical, right? On the second one, it was like more like the 1989 earthquake in California, where the vertical shaking really messed up buildings. It actually caused a complete overhaul on how you guys did building codes, right? On in Christchurch with the recovery?
Yeah, yeah. One of the unsung heroes of the earthquake was, was the building code. So you know, it's a piece of legislation. It's not very sexy. But man, it saved a lot of lives. And most people, you know, people in our industry will understand, but other people may not. The idea behind the building code is to provide survivability, not ongoing usability. So the idea is the, you know, the earthquake hits the building, people can escape from it. And if you're lucky, the building can be reused afterwards, but the primary role of the building code is to ensure people can get out after the earthquake and walk away from it. And except for a couple of notable exceptions in our city, the building code did a fantastic job. And then again, after the earthquakes, the building code's been upgraded considerably since then. And Christchurch is going through a pretty significant rebuild right now. And we're actually sort of towards the tail end of it. And we're watching these buildings get put up here and they're putting a ton of steel. And if there's another earthquake in Christchurch, the best place you could be is probably inside. Our buildings are so strong and so safe now that the future of the city is in really good hands.
Sometimes I give controversial statements like the best preparedness program that's ever been done in the US is not 72 hour kits. It's firefighters teaching about, teaching kids in schools, don't let your parents smoke in bed. And then the other one that sometimes I get the flack on is if emergency managers really want to be effective, they'd be urban planners and change urban policy on building codes. And if you want to create true resiliency, I go back, I had this question in the UK actually, because you know, I come from obviously the US perspective, but I, you know, I want to learn how other people are doing it. And I was the keynote speaker back in, I don't know, March or April to the Preparedness Society, their EM Society. And you know, the influence that emergency managers have on urban policy, do you feel that in New Zealand, you and your teammates, you know, your, your profession has the, the bandwidth, the political weight, whatever you want to call it, to help policy? And where do you guys fall into helping out things like, hey, let's change the building codes?
Yeah, look, fantastic question. And I couldn't agree more. We would be way more effective if we tipped the, the financial equation over and started spending 90% of our money on reduction and 10% in response, but, but we don't. The, you know, the most effective emergency manager prevents or mitigates these challenges that we face. I recently saw an article that, and read and riffed off, we could solve half the problems we have in New Zealand. And I'm sure it's the same in the States and other places. If we're just built in sensible places, if we build on floodplains and we build in where there's liquefaction and earthquake zones and where rivers are going to flood and where we're in at storm surge, if we put people in front of the hazard, the, the hazards are still going to get there. So let's, let's build in the right places and you know, and our money would be much better spent there. Do we have the bandwidth and do we have the, the political influence? Not as much as we'd like. Nowhere near as much as we'd like. We could be far more effective if we could be more strategic and we could, you know, we could adjust our legislation to allow for, for the advice that's needed to put people in safer places. As it currently sits, our arrangements here don't really enable that.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, it's like this catch 22 because our, our field is still maturing. We're still becoming more professionalized. I mean, there's a lot of professionals, but you know, we, we have this issue and it's a global issue everywhere I go, from the UK to New Zealand to Japan to, you know, the US. And even friends in Canada, you know, they, they have different systems and different problem sets that they're working through, but there, there is a lot of the similar issues. And I do think it's because of the, the field in general, it's hard to encapsulate everything that our field does. But outside of that whole discussion, which we could make another 10 series podcast on, you know, in terms of like the, the earthquake perspective and the mitigation versus resiliency argument. I, again, another thing I get a lot of flack on is I pick on resiliency. I'm not against it. I'm just for mitigation. I would rather not have the problem than see how resilient I am to the problem. And a, a great way to, to talk about building codes and earthquakes and some of the things that you just brought up. And if somebody's pushing back on that, like, well, is that even possible? This, all this mitigation stuff? If you always, if I was in the 1800s and I was going through flu season or a couple inches of snow, I am much, that is much more dangerous for me versus now, right? Like flu season, a couple inches of snow, either one of those things, not, not that big of a deal, right? We have all these extra things that have mitigated that, you know, heating in homes, better clothing, vaccines for the flu season, all this extra stuff that we can do and an understanding of, you know, our own biology. If you, if you fast forward to that, into other areas, we could definitely figure this out. I mean, Japan's earthquake codes are incredible. We don't have that same level in the US. There's a great movie documentary called One House, Last House Standing by George Segal. He talks about the building codes in that. And, and it, I've had Amanda Sayak on here, the Leslie Knob of earthquakes. That's what she calls herself in the earthquake, in the US community. And you know, I feel the, the same things, like we need to get to mitigation. From a guy who had, is doing everything he can in both New Zealand and clearly beyond, what are some of the things that we as emergency managers can do right now to help move the needle on those areas to help mitigate some of these problems? Like what can we do logically right now?
I think there's a, the biggest challenge and the biggest opportunity are the same thing. And that is to get the, the decision makers and the policy setters to understand the benefits of spending money well in advance of the threat. So you can save 10 or 100 or 1,000 times that money into the future. And the challenge with that is you have to tell a terrible story, which no one wants to hear about what the consequences may be. And then there's the survivor paradox, right? Where you'll have a small event and nothing too dramatic will happen. And people will say, well, we've spent too much money on getting ready because look, you know, we've come through it. Okay. So there's some built in barriers to getting that, that message across. I think one of the benefits, and there aren't many, but one of the benefits of being in a city that's been through a number of big events, you know, we've had a lot of earthquakes here. We had some fires here, not on the same scale as maybe UIC, but for us pretty big. Then we had a terrorism event, which is, you know, extremely unusual in New Zealand.
The two churches, right?
Ah, yeah. The mosque shootings. Yeah. Yeah. Horrific event here. One of the benefits of that now is our political leaders here in Christchurch particularly are sensitized to the benefits. So they see it and they respond to it. And they're still, you know, you still need to debate the merit with them, but they're much more aware of the benefit of the money spent in advance at risk rather than throwing money after it. So that, Christchurch, how to expand that nationally is a good question, but the opportunity to do that means an enormous saving of time and effort and money, and most importantly, lives. You know, the, the money conversations are part of it, but you know, I'm, I'm a dad and my wife and I, you know, we love our kids just like everyone else, right? And if we can make our city and country safer for them, you know, we'd be happy to spend that money. And if we can convince the policymakers to have the same view, I think that starts to, to shift the dial.
Yeah. There's a, there's a lot to unpack there. The political angle, sometimes we go so hard in with our, our, our knowledge and our expertise, you know, quote unquote, the expertise word that I used earlier, that we forget that most other people don't want to think about this. And you know, blasting people too much can be a problem of like, hey, like I, I, I don't see the value in you anymore because I don't want to deal with this. At the same time, there's a, if you have a, a good relationship with your senior leadership, one of the fun things I like to do every once in a while, not very often because you don't want to remind them of your job too much because of that money thing. But every once in a while, when nothing happens, say to them, hey, did anything happen today? No, you're welcome. You know, like, hey, that was, hey, you thought this was going to be a big issue. It's not. You're welcome. You know, we have to start taking credits for some of the work that we do. And it, it feels like far and few between, but the reality is you want it to be far and few between. You, you don't want to have to be in crisis mode all the time. You want to be in routine mode. So there, there is a healthy balance between, you know, remembering who I am and trying to stay out of the way too, so you can keep working.
Yeah, look, that sounds very familiar. We've got much the same challenge here. If things go too well for too long, then the, then the, the knowledge and the sensitivity to risk starts to, starts to reduce and you go back into that cycle of under preparing. So again, but you don't want disasters as well, right? So you've got to find that happy medium. And we just had an event here sort of locally the other day. Nothing happening in my part of the world, but our neighbors were getting smacked by a heavy rain event. So we desperately trying to get our people down there to, to help because we want to be good neighbors, but also the best training event you'll ever go on is a, is a real event.
Heck yeah.
So we can, we can scale our guys up by, by helping our neighbors out, you know, multiple benefits in doing that. And then when they come back, they've got a whole lot of good ideas on how we can do it better ourselves.
Yeah, I agree that I love training. I think we have diminishing skills in our field and we need, we need great training. I am very grateful for the hurricanes that I responded to because especially that first one, man, that, that was such an eye opening experience. All the things that I was, that I had been putting together and then by the next one, it is, it is kind of funny to me. I, you know, with Hurricane Milton coming in, some of my old friends who've done, you know, probably 50 hurricanes at this point are in Orlando right now. And hearing their language and how they talk to me versus an emergency manager who's never deployed and they, you know, it's going to be catastrophic. True. But you, you would literally think the world is about to implode, the entire planet. And it's just understanding how to stay cool in these moments where you know, you can still prepare, you can be a professional, but you don't have to get overwhelmed and psyched out before the event even happens. And so there's, there's that kind of level that it just experience in itself. Cause you know what to expect, right? You hear the, the, I heard a sheriff on the news. He was like, we're going to have to evacuate. Everybody's going to be gone. I'm going to be gone. We're not going to save you. You hear him talk. It was cool, it was collected. Hey, this is what we're doing. You heard somebody else who was kind of a novice and they were, the, the language that they were using was pretty extreme. And so I, I think response and embedding yourself in other people's responses is an ingenious idea, to be honest. And you're, and you're helping, you know, so it's, it's a double win there. So.
Yeah, look, and we like to help. I think, you know, you, you talk about experienced emergency managers and, and they're invaluable. And there's an ongoing discussion here in New Zealand around qualifying emergency managers and experienced emergency managers. And I think a combination of both is, is the sweet spot. Book learning is good. Don't know doubt about it. But getting your, you know, getting out there and getting down and dirty in a big event provides a whole lot of learning that you can never get in a classroom. And the, the thing I find with experienced managers, emergency managers, you know, you can spot them a mile off. And novice emergency managers too, but I think the really, the, the emergency managers I most look out for are the ones that have responded to one event. They've, they've gone to one event, they've done it. It was probably successful for a number of reasons, maybe to do it then, maybe not. And now they think they know how all events are going to unfold.
Yes.
And I, I call them the most dangerous emergency manager because I've done one. And then from now on, this next event must be like the last one I did. And I've just, I want to say to them, no, this event will be new in, in many ways. And the really experienced emergency managers, as the complexity takes off and becomes, you know, logarithmic, logarithmic, more intense and more complex, the really experienced emergency managers become more simple. Their messages become clearer, their directions become really refined, their language is really simplistic. And I think you can tell when you go into an E O C, the people that look like they're doing the basics really well, often the people that have been doing it for the longest. And that to me is the key.
Hey, we just want to do a quick pause X to thank all of our sponsors with the Readiness Lab Podcast Network, L3 Harris, Forerunner, Sea Bernie World, H Q E Systems, Ampapar Response Training Center, Impulse, Doberman Emergency Management, and especially all of you who subscribe to the T R L Insider Program and who are listening to this episode right now. Thank you so much for your support. Let's jump back in. There's, you remind me of a great counsel I got when I got to Japan. I was there for a couple of years and, you know, as a volunteer. And the, the advice that I got, then this really helped me out. It shows you, I was a pretty prideful guy myself, but the leader was talking about three levels of leadership and not everybody hits the third, but they can skip the second. The first phase is you have a lot of fire, you're excited, you're brand new, but you're also in a way very humble because you recognize you're basically, you know, brand new, you're coming out of the academy, if you will. The third phase is what you just described. And the way it was described to me was when they talk, everybody leans in because they've thought about was when they talk, everybody leans in because they've thought about it. By the time they speak, it's simple, it's straightforward. People know what to expect and they're very trusted. The middle phase is the most dangerous and it's where a lot of people get stuck. They get a little bit of experience and so their arrogance just shoots through the roof. For me, you know, no, no Japanese, couldn't speak it, you know, like, you know, I'm having my G show, my, my dictionary out. And then I learned a little bit and all of a sudden I feel I'm awesome. You know, I'm fluent. No, I'm not, not even close, right? Probably speak like a third grader. And then years down the road, when I humbled myself a little bit more and wanted, had that thirst for knowledge, the, the third phase is combining the experience of the second phase with the hungry, passionate side of the, of the first. And so now you're able to be, to sustain it. You're not these big blast of heat, but you're also not just lame. And it's a, it's the same thing can be applied to emergency management or any other field in terms of like progression of management. You know, brand new learning, maybe a little bit of arrogance, but it's more excitement than arrogance versus you think you know a thing or two, and so you're unteachable and you're a beast to be around. Yeah. You can spot it from a mile away now. So great counsel, great advice for sure. So if you're, if you're moving on from, you know, we keep going, jumping up to the 50,000 foot level because you're, we're, we're going to do a 10 parts series. I'm not even kidding. The, the, the Christchurch and the lessons learned from Christchurch, you were able to bring that into Nepal. I've brought that up a couple of times. Talk to me about Nepal. Talk to me about what you did there because if I recall, the newer building codes in Nepal actually hurt the, the, the earthquake more than some of the bamboo structures from like literally the 1600s that were able to withstand it. Can you, can you walk us through that?
Yeah, yeah. So the IOM put out a request for proposal that I submitted against. And we were very fortunate that, that, you know, the team that we had here won that. And we ended up heading over to Nepal. We did, we did a scouting trip over there for a couple of days, came back. Then it took a team of four plus one. I'll just sort of describe that why in a minute. Across to Nepal, we delivered training to 104 government staff. So in across two weeks, 52 per week, fully translated the whole lot. And what we had was a, you know, five day session per group. And we broke each day down into a particular element that we'd teach there. So we started with, with an understanding of what the structures were like in, in Nepal. And we were teaching a particular piece. There was a million buildings damaged in the earthquake in 2015 in Nepal. I mean, it's an extraordinary number. And the majority of those buildings were, you know, stack stone, single story private residences. And, you know, and the homeowner had to look after that. That wasn't a job that the government could even consider taking on. And the story, the buildings over six stories needed heavy machinery to be demolished. And we weren't a part of that demolition proposal. So, so that was outside scope for us. So we ended up having this particular sweet spot, which was for the building between three and six stories. So we were teaching them and we were over there as a recovery team, but we were teaching them about how to conduct safe demolition as a part of the broader recovery. So we had a geotechnical engineer, a structural engineer, a project manager, myself. And at the time in Christchurch, we're also working with a really experienced contractor who could get on the tools, he could get on the gear and operate all the machinery to conduct his work as well. So we went over as a four person team and the contractor who, he does pretty well, I'll be honest. So he said, hey, do you mind if I come? And like, you know, I might, I can't pay you. But if you want to turn up and add value, you're more than welcome. So he paid for himself to fly over there with us. And we delivered two lots of five days of training to the police, the armed police, the scientists, the Kathmandu, Kathmandu Valley Development Association and a few others in there. And we talked them, we talked to them about how to manage a demolition from start to finish. How to assess the building, how to assess the ground, how to assess the options and the techniques, where to begin, how to manage the debris, how to manage safety, how to manage the people, what to do with the foundations when you're finished, how to leave the site safe, et cetera. And the whole course from, from the Monday morning to the Friday afternoon was delivered in a really good logical sequence. We developed training material. We presented it to them. Every single day we had a test to start the day and to finish the day. And at the end of the second week, we ran the test again and some people in the test got 100%. Absolutely 100%, but it was, it was the, the translators had sat in the course twice across the two weeks. So we'd taught 104 people plus the translation crew. And they also went out and then they, over that two week period, they had become, I, I wouldn't say experts in demolition, but they were certainly capable of delivering a safe, a safe demolition in a recovery environment in Nepal. So that was a really proud moment. We delivered some, some great training material. And every time there's an event in a sort of around the world where there's sort of mass demolitions required, we'll get people come to me and request to get copies of that document. And every single time we just give it away. It's a, it's a free tool to be used anywhere where it's applicable.
The, you remind me of, and this is going to be a big shout out to Walt Lewis and Joe Hernandez with the MedSpec Group. That I go out there and do the urban search and rescue training with them. They do a medspec, a part of that, but I was able to take the lessons learned from them and work with them and, and help the US Marines on urban warfare, emergency services, training for collapsing confined structures and that kind of stuff. But you're walking through there and you know, whether it's like wall fall or implosions, rubble piles, that kind of different things that you're walking through. It's pretty incredible that, you know, there, there, the, the amount of influence for good that you were able to do both in Kathmandu and beyond. Just as a side note, I'm still better at Georgetown because I was a master student during the earthquake. And I was trying to convince them to allow us to go over there and observe some of the recovery. So I could have met you years ago. So how dare they? But yeah, either way, I mean, your, your story is so cool. Brendan, you know, we're, we're running basically out of time here on this episode. And again, I want you to come back on from the 50,000 foot level, because that's basically where we stayed most of the time here. What would be your first touch points to emergency managers who are listening in? You're like, okay, hey, make sure you're doing X, Y, and Z here. As we're talking about earthquake readiness.
Oh, so, so in general, I think the, the best attribute for an emergency manager is curiosity. You, you have to be willing to learn and you have to be willing to think and learn new skills and read and assimilate information and use it to develop better systems and techniques and tips and tricks. So earthquakes are a part of what we do here. And you know, while we've got some pretty significant experience with it, we don't want to take our eye off the ball with the other hazards around us as well. So we have an all hazards focus here with a really strong earthquake plan and resilience program. But we're more than that. And you know, the stuff that we're doing currently around space weather, tsunamis, the new hazards that are emerging in our geopolitical environment too. If an emergency manager is not curious, if they are not, they don't have a growth mindset, if they're not learning and picking up new skills all the time, they're not going to be successful. So my number one attribute when I'm looking to recruit staff is, do they want to learn? Are they willing? And they need to be able to do it themselves too. I can't spend all my time over their shoulder, force feeding them your information. They have to have that curiosity and get out there and get it themselves. And when I find those people, I grab them and man, I hold on to them because you can turn a curious person into an emergency manager.
That's awesome. What a, what a great, like a mic drop moment about curiosity. The, the great people that I've had on the show are the people who love learning, who are great educators themselves. I mean, obviously you're, you're, you're able to walk through this so seamlessly on this episode. And you know, the other conversations we've had as well, it's kind of enjoyable just to listen to you and hear your perspective of things, not just because of the accent, obviously, but for the, for the good stuff too. But seriously, Brendan, thank you so much for walking us through. I, I would love for you to come back on and talk more of a tactical level of EM and some of the earthquake stuff and cordoning. But from this 50,000 foot level perspective, I mean, I, I've obviously learned some things and you know, I appreciate you coming on.
Hey, no worries. John, really enjoyed it. I'd love to do another episode with you on, on cordons. We learnt a lot. We got some of it right and some of it wrong. And I think in the big metro cities, you know, and there's, there's hundreds of them in the States and thousands around the world, that whole how to respond when an earthquake hits the city is in its infancy. And if I can help some people understand what they might need to do there and they can learn from the mistakes we've made, I'd be happy to share that too.
Awesome. You're a good man. If, if people want to reach out to you, what's the best way to, for them to reach out to you?
Yeah, just email me. My name is here on the screen. So brendan.winder@ccc.govt.nz. Click me a message and I'll be happy to respond.
Awesome. The, the, for the, those who are listening, I gotta do that thing we do every time. Thank you so much again to Brendan for coming on, but thank you for listening, all those who are tuning in. If you have a question about earthquakes, if you're like Amanda Seyak, the earthquake, the, the Leslie Novo of earthquakes in the US, and you've done things here or you're overseas, we'd love to hear about what you're doing, share best practices, all the good stuff. And if you got something out of it, the easiest way for us to know is give us that five star rating and subscribe or comment on social media, like on LinkedIn. We have a sizable presence there. So I'd love to hear your comments. And with that, we'll see you for the next one. Peace.